June 30th meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to ask every-- well, first, let me know the copy of the Public Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the sake of time and a special recognition that's on today's agenda, we're going to first open up to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Clerk, and with that, I would ask you to call the roll.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chairman.
Here. We will go down to Item Three, Recognition and Proclamations. Letter A, a resolution commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Douglas County Public Defender's Office. We have some illustrious guests here today. In addition, we have Tom Riley wearing a tie.[82.03][82.03](Laughter). And with that, we will turn it over to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's with great pleasure that I was able to introduce the first resolution I've introduced as a county commissioner commemorating the centennial of the founding of the Douglas County Public Defender's Office, which was one of the first in the country. I came across this thanks to the excellent record-keeping of our county clerk who provided me with a minutes of a Douglas County Board meeting from Monday, July 26, 1915, which shows a resolution that reads as follows. "To all to whom these presence shall come greetings, know ye that I, John A. Moorhead, Governor of the state of Nebraska, reposing special trust and confidence in the integrity, patriotism, and ability of Richard S. Horton, on behalf and in the name of the state do hereby appoint and commission him public defender for Douglas County, and do authorize and empower him to discharge the duties of said office according to law. This appointment to take effect and be enforced on or after July 8, 1915, and to continue for such time as he shall satisfactorily perform all the duties imposed upon such officer by law, not to exceed, however, the general election of the year 1916." And since that time, there have been-- two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine-- nine public defenders. Most recently, Tom Riley. But they have been Richard S. Horton, the original public defender appointed, John N. Baldwin, who served from 1921 to 1929, Robert R. Troyer, who served from 1929 to 1933, Joseph M. Lovely, who served from 1933 to 1960, William E. Lovely, who served from 1960 to 1961, A.Q. Wolf, who served from 1961 to 1971, Frank Morrison, who served from 1971 to 1977, Tom Kenny, who served from 1977 to 1997, and Tom Riley, who served from 1977 to the present.[254.31][254.31](Laughter). Although Tom has been the public defender since 1977--[261.14][261.14](Laughter). I believe he came on staff in '75--
Yeah.
--and so has been there for 40 years. We have, in commemoration of this, introduced and will today approve the following resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska. Whereas on April 15, 1915, the Nebraska Legislature created one of the first two public defender's offices in the United States, and whereas the purpose of the public defender's office is to provide legal counsel to those indigent persons who are charged with felonies and misdemeanors punishable by imprisonment, and those who are the subject of a mental health commitment petition, and whereas in July of 1915, the Governor of Nebraska appointed Richard S. Horton to serve as the first Douglas County public defender effective July 8, 1915, and whereas the defense of liberty in a free country depends on the protection of the rights of all the people, and whereas current public-- current Douglas County public defender Tom Riley and his staff provide outstanding criminal defense to the indigent members of our community, and they have been instrumental in ensuring a fair and equitable criminal justice system, and whereas, under Tom Riley's leadership, the Douglas County Public Defender's Office is unquestionably one of the very best in the nation, and whereas the people of Douglas County take great pride in the excellent legal services provided to its citizens, and whereas the Board desires to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the Douglas County Public Defender's Office, now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby commemorates the 100th anniversary of the Douglas County Public Defender's Office and further expresses its sincere gratitude to public defender Tom Riley and his staff for the outstanding service they provide to the people of Douglas County dated this 30th day of June 2015.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. If anybody would like to comment from the audience, we-- this is the time.
Thank you.
Yes.[421.00][421.00](Laughter).
Tom Riley, Public Defender's Office, Douglas County. First of all, it's an amazing thing that Douglas County, Nebraska, was one of the first in the country to have a state or county-run public defender's offices. Some of you may or may not know, under the Constitution interpretation by the United States Supreme Court, Bill of Rights was not applicable to the states. So the right to counsel was not mandated by the federal constitution at state court, which is where most cases were prosecuted until 1963, when Gideon v. Wainwright was decided, and then the U.S. Supreme Court said, if you're charged with an offense that can send you to jail as a felony, you had a right to counsel, including state court. So we were 50 years ahead of them, ahead of the Supreme Court, ahead of the curve, being fair to poor people who were accused of crimes. And that's something to be pretty proud of, not just for those of us who are in the office, but for all the people of Douglas County. The great legacy that we are living. As you know, you know, it's a-- this is a tough job. I mean, I was the same height as Chris Rogers when I started.[517.66][517.66](Laughter). You get pounded over the head long enough, this is what happens, you know? I am not going to take up much time. I just want to, first of all, got a large contingent from our office, and I just ask them to stand up and be recognized, please. Come on, folks.[542.54][542.54](Applause). And thank you. And I want to thank all of the colleagues that I've had over the 40 years in our office. We've had some really, really great people work in the office. And I especially want to thank Frank Morrison and Tom Kenny for giving a kid from Massachusetts a chance to have a job here. And I do have to thank my fam for putting up with my ridiculous work schedule that I impose upon myself, and they've always been there to support me in this job. So I just, I can't tell you enough-- the last thing I guess I just want to say is I want to thank all the people who've been on the county board in my terms here. You have been of great support to us. I have never felt like we were getting short-changed or short shrift from you. You've always responded to our needs and requests, and I view it not as a request from us, but as a request from the people that we represent.
That's right.
And I really thank you for that. So thanks to the staff, thanks to my former colleagues, and thanks to you.
Thank you. Great.[621.16][621.16](Applause).
All right.
Well, it's been a long time since I've appeared before this Board. Thank you for the audience. Well, my name's Joe Battalion. I'm a federal district court judge, a federal district court judge, senior district court judge now here in Omaha. And before that, in 1973, I was a law clerk in the federal-- or in the state public defender's office. Frank Morrison and I was working basically for Bennett Hornstein, who was doing all of the appeals at the time. You know, 1915, if you think about it, that was a really long time ago, and it was certainly the product of a populist movement that occurred back then. And the populist endeavor that the state of Nebraska has continues today, and it's a long tradition, and it's a very fine tradition. I work in the Budget Committee for the Judicial Conference of the United States, and I'm the liaison for the federal public defender's office for the whole country. And I always hearken back to lessons that I learned in the state, in the Douglas County Public Defender's Office, because we worked hard, we had a reasonable caseload. One of the pivotal characters, I believe, in the public defender's office at that time was Frank Morrison. He was the former governor of the state of Nebraska and came back and became the public defender's chief. And as that chief, helped us move from a part-time office to a full-time office, and helped us make indigent defense services what it is. And then Tom Kenny followed in his stead and made it work and built a relationship with the county board that continues today with Tom Riley. And I think that the Douglas County Board and the citizens of Douglas County should be very proud about this day, because 100 years ago, we were ahead of the curve, and we, in my opinion, still remain ahead of the curve. So congratulations.[745.82][745.82](Applause).
Good morning.
My name is Sean Conway. I'm, I guess, a recent alum of the Douglas County Public Defender's Office. And so it's my honor and privilege to speak before the Board today about the importance of that office in my life. I left the office in 2011. I have approximately the same height issues as--[778.01][778.01](Laughter). If you can see me. But I'm now in private practice, but the time that I spend at the public defender's office I consider to be vitally important in my life, not just as a lawyer, but I think personally as well. The people that I worked with, and they're probably laughing at me, are some of the most compassionate, dedicated, hard-working lawyers that I'll ever have the privilege to know. They're the people that taught me that everyone deserves to have someone in their corner, that we have to protect the least among us if we're going to protect all of us. Tom had mentioned Gideon v. Wainwright, and I think it's really incredible that this county was-- had that vision and protected those rights nearly 50 years before the U.S. Supreme Court decided that the Sixth Amendment provided that right to counsel to everybody. So I just want to, I guess, say that I'm proud to have been a member of that office. And I think it's especially important today. I think it's especially important in Omaha and Douglas County, which is a great city. It's a wonderful city. It's a wonderful county. But we are often plagued with poverty and violence and lack of access to education. And it's institutions like the public defender's office that protect the least among us that I think provide that example for everyone, that we're better than just-- we're more than the sum of our parts. And so, thank you, and it's been my honor to serve in that office.[900.13][900.13](Applause).
Seeing no one else, Commissioner Boyle.
I'd just like to say a couple words of--[912.25][912.25](Laughter). Oh, sorry, Mike. Well, I know all the Irish look alike, but you know--[918.88][918.88](Laughter). I'm going to say just a couple of things. As one of the attorneys on the Board, I have watched and supported the work of the public defender's office for many, many years, since 1997, since I've been on the Board. You're providing smart, effective representation for your clients, and you're doing it with big hearts, great minds, and respect. And it's really very key to a just society that people who are accused of all sorts of crimes, from small and minor crimes, to, if there are such a thing, to very serious ones, that they have adequate and knowledgeable representation, and people who represent them with feeling and with intelligence. And you've done it. And Tom has set the tone, I think, for the office. He is a person with a big heart. I love to hear him when he's on television, walking down the hallways, and the things they say about him, and I like to read about what he says in the paper. They're heartfelt, they're to the point, and they're right. So you're advocates for the people, and not only the people you represent, but all of us, because we have a duty to make sure people are treated fairly, and you're delivering that for us. So I congratulate you, and it's just terrific-- it's just a terrific day for me. Congratulations.
Commissioner Kraft.
I too would like to thank Tom for his years of service. You know, the head of the department sets the pace for the department. And in this case, Tom Riley sets the pace and the energy and the enthusiasm and the education of new attorneys that he's taking on all the time and teaching them to be a wonderful asset to this county and the country. That and his other talents, such as playing the Irish music at various events. I want to-- for all of that, I want to thank his family.
Right.
Because Tom spends his life working for other people who have no one else in their corner. So to the family, thank you very much.
I was a public defender for nine years, and to paraphrase, somebody-- everything I learned about being a lawyer, I learned at the public defender's office. I started off as Joe Battalion's clerk for an eventful initiation and ended up as one of Tom Riley's felony attorneys for my postgraduate work. I am proud of my service there and even prouder of the fact that the number of my siblings and my wife currently serve as public defenders, or have. And we are proud of that tradition of public service. It is a credit to, I think, Douglas County and her people that we provide such excellent legal service to the least amongst us. It's one of the best things that we do. And when I was interviewed by the local paper about the public defender, they said, "Well, why is it that the Douglas County public defender performs so well when you hear so many stories around the country of public defenders who are understaffed, or underfunded, or overworked?" And I said, "Because we take pride in the tradition of support for this noble endeavor." I'd also like to echo Commissioner Kraft's-- kudos to the Riley family, who deserve this award as much as Tom and the staff of the public defender. The sacrifices that have been made over the years are incalculable, and it's a credit to Marcia and Tom that they've raised such a fine family of young citizens. We are happy today to commemorate this occasion, and hopefully in another 100 years, another Board-- probably still Tom Riley, but another Board of Commissioners-- will be here to commemorate the bicentennial. With that, I thank you all for coming, and congratulations, Tom, and congratulations, my fellow public defenders. Good job.[1230.44][1230.44](Applause).
With that, we have a motion to second. Please vote.
Tom, you should have offered an amendment about your budget.[1249.25][1249.25](Laughter).
Motion passes.
With that, again, we thank you all for your service, and we will now ask for a vote to recess the county board meeting and go into the Board of Equalization.
Motion to resource.
Second. Recess?[1265.91][1265.91](Laughter). The second. Please vote.
We're voting out, sir.
Just a moment, please.
Okay.
Okay. Motion passes.
All right. With that, we will give a few minutes here for the room to clear out.
I will. Same with Tom. (Inaudible) I didn't see you. How you doing, kid?
Good. Good. You're fine.
It's determined. It's too good.
It's good to see you, Marty.
Okay. With that, we will now call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda.
Your.
Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 23, 2015. Item B, call a meeting and set Tuesday, July 21, as the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections. Is there a motion--
Motion to approve AMB.
Second. There's a motion to second. Roll call-- I mean, please vote.[1340.48][1340.48](Laughter). Citizens' comments. This is the time for any citizen who wishes to comment on an agenda regarding the Board of Equalization that is not officially on the Board of Equalization's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. We have Items C, D, E, F, G, and H. Are there any concerns among commissioners with any of those? If not, is there a motion to take them as whole? Hope, sorry. Didn't show up. Got it. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I'd just like to ask Mike Goodwill to come to the podium for a moment. And I just want a brief explanation of the G, correction of values of-- for properties that are undervalued or overvalued. How does this-- how does this take place, and does somebody come to you, or what happens?
Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessor/Register of Deeds Office. This is the matter we discussed a few weeks ago. It's a process that the statute enables us to do that's been underutilized in the past. And yes, the public will contact us. We've got a lot of contacts, for example, after the valuation notices went out. And what we do is we put the appraiser for that property or that part of town in touch with that particular taxpayer. They may inspect the property, they may gather additional information that we didn't have from the taxpayer, and for those instances where we think a change is merited, we have the ability to create this overvalued/undervalued list that we can take to the Board for approval and get these values corrected in lieu of the property owner having to file a protest.
Well, is this a result of the state law, or was this on the books before?
It's been on the books. It's just something that, in the past, just had not been utilized by our office very often.
Okay. Well, I-- from the looks of it, I looked at it when I got it, and it looks to me like it's really a good thing, and I want to tell you how much I like to see this, because if this, I believe, then these are folks who would have come to us, to the Board of Equalization officially, and appeared before referees and so forth. So you reached in and kind of short-circuited and took care of it before it went that far. Is that really what happened?
Yes.
Good. Okay. Well, thanks a lot. I'm very much in favor of this. Thanks, Mike.
I would make the motion to approve resolutions C through H and adjourn for the Board of Equalization.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Please vote.
I thought it was-- sorry.
Okay. We are there. We will now vote to bring the county board of commissioners back from recess. Roll.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Please vote.
I thought it was-- sorry.
Okay. We are there. We will now vote to bring the county board of commissioners back from recess. Roll.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Please vote.
I supposed to vote on something?
Reconvening the Board of Commissioners.
We'll reconvene. Motion passes.
We'll now move to Item 1, minutes and claims on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' meeting held June 23, 2015. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, July 14, 2015. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion to second. Everyone, please vote.
Item 2, the consent agenda. There are 13 items on the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove any items? Seeing none, is there a motion--
Commissioner Boyle. I got a blind spot over there towards you.
I'm sorry about that. Yes, I'd like to-- is somebody here from the county engineer's office or not? Well, I'll just send them an email. I was confused by the-- it's a-- let's see, what item is this?
C.
It's the OPBD and county engineer. It's item, yes, C2. There's a-- removing some power lines, and it's going to-- we have to pay OPBD $341,866.89 to relocate transmission and distribution facilities that are located on private utility easements. And I-- then you go on, that's kind of-- well, it's a big chunk of money for the first place. I'm curious, it probably goes from state gas tax or something, but then you get further down into it, and it says that the total reimbursal-- reimbursement-- reimbursable-- reimbursable distribution work is $190,000. So I'll just send them an email and ask them what the deal is. I'm sure it's real common, but it sure seems like we ought to have a kind of a better relationship with OPBD that, you know, I mean, we ought to pay the chunk out this kind of money to move power lines. I don't know. I'll send them an email--
Okay.
--and let you know what happens.
All right.
I think I know the answer, don't you?
Yes.[1631.65][1631.65](Laughter). With that, do we have--
We don't have a motion yet.
No.
I'm sorry. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes.
Item 4, citizens' comments. If there's anyone in the audience that has any comments that they'd like to express at this time that are not on the county board's agenda for this meeting, it's now your time to come forward. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to-- Item 7, and committees and discussions. Letter A, finance. Commissioners Morgan and Kavanaugh.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. We'll move on to Letter B, administrative services. Item 1 is discussion action regarding resolution to approve county funding for the Douglas County Historical Society. And I know for the record, this is a routine contract with a three-year term with 2% increase. With that, is there a motion from the Board?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's-- 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 it's--
Second.
There's a motion to second. Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. That was a great celebration to begin the morning with the Public Defender's Office, but I also want to say what a great relationship we have with the Douglas County Historical Society. There are many counties where they don't get along as well with their historical society, and a historical society can put in their own, or go through the process to get their own tax levy. And I am pleased that we have such a good working relationship. This is, to pay them in their role as our official archivist, a designation that they received in 1992, they do a lot for the county. We get a lot for our money with this, and I appreciate what a, what a good, good relationship we have with our historical society. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Duda's sentiments. I've had working experience with the Historical Society and have been impressed with their professionalism. I think that they serve a very important function in county government as our archivists, and we are well-served, and I think for the amounts that we're talking about, extremely economically well-served by supporting their efforts. Cindy Hadso, who's the current president and the staff at the Historical Society, recently had us there for a tour of the Crook House, which is magnificent architectural jewel and has been largely restored through the efforts of the Douglas County Historical Society. There's more work to be done, and we hope to work with you in the years to come to make sure that that, that facility is, is in tip-top shape. So thank you for what you do. We, we're glad to be a partner in your efforts, and I'm glad that we're extending this for three years. Thank you.
Mr. Kraft.
Cindy, did you want to say any words?
You've got to come to Mike.
You need to come up, or one of your... Kathy, okay. Because it is a wonderful place. I go to many of these speeches, but not all of them, or presentations. The exhibits are fantastic. The surroundings are fantastic. The garden is excellent, and I understand that even Mike Boyle said that the extension office is a resource.
You're actually a historical artifact, aren't you, Commissioner?
I am, yeah.
So Kathy?
Well, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak. I agree with everything you said. It is a treasure, and it's a treasure that we've all worked together for many years to restore and to keep as part of the county, and we certainly couldn't do that without this long-term partnership that we have with the county and the county commissioners and our designation in 1992. And it is always going to be a work in progress, for sure, when you're dealing with buildings that are over 136, six years old. We recently went through a rebranding process, and our new mission statement is to preserve and enliven the historical insight in Douglas County. And I think the words "enlivening the insight" really speak to how we're actively working to get people involved in history. And our vision is that every person will appreciate that our past is present. Living history doesn't mean living in the past. It means interacting with the community in a whole new way. And we've really tried to do that in some of the things that Commissioner Kraft was referring to. Through our new programming, like our Genealogy Club and the new author series that we have, have been extremely successful, and we gave you recently a fact sheet on some of the statistics, so I won't get into a lot of that, but we had over a 700% increase in the second Sunday attendance, which seems kind of crazy, but it's true. We've found that the more programming we offer, that it's very well-received, and people are very interested in coming to that. And our exhibits alone are just bringing in more and more people all the time into the Crook House Museum and really actively involved in the outdoor space that we have at Heartland of America Park as well, which actually, there's hundreds of thousands of people that are viewing that exhibit. This fall, we're working, working to partner with 20 different ethnic organizations in town so that we can talk about really the cultural fabric and ethnic fabric that built Omaha way back from when the Irish arrived in 1854 to East Indian and Sudanese and recent ethnic organizations. And we're really working to leverage those partnerships and get, get more and more groups involved in the county. So we're working to really share that history in a lot of different ways. And just quickly to just say that we're really very proud to have that official designation as the caretaker of Douglas County, Douglas County's history, and we thank you for investing in the work that we do.
Commissioner Boyle, is this new, or is it a holdout?
It's new.
Okay, Commissioner Boyle.
I'd just like to say, first of all, Cindy, if you want to, you're welcome to come down and take some photos. Don't feel like this is...
From the front.
From the front, if you'd like to.
Or behind us, even.
Yeah. Come on down. This is a, kind of a roaming around situation going around. But, you bet. I'd like to say something about the society. First of all, the County Board members get invited to a lot of events, and it's seldom, seldom, even when alcohol is served, seldom, that we all appear. And we were all there the other morning. Mary Ann Borgeson was out of town. It would have been all of us. And I think that probably says a lot more than words about how we feel, about what you do. You have a mission, and you're sticking to it. And I did mention the extension office, which I have a reputation for, kind of being a gunner, but they would be a terrific asset to help you with some of the plantings and so forth. They have a lot of skills, the master gardeners, and I maybe have already used them. But that's really all I want to say. I'm so proud of the work that you do, and you obviously have the support of us. You are good stewards of the funds that we allow you to use, and the programs that you offer are on target and in keeping with what your mission is. So you've done a terrific job, just a terrific job, maintaining that beautiful facility and all the things that go with it. So I'm very, very pleased. I just want to wish you continued success.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, and you do have a group that goes out into the community to speak to various neighborhood associations and organizations, do you not?
We do. We have a speakers bureau that speaks to a lot of different organizations, but it also speaks, we have people that go into classrooms that do for youth, different clubs and organizations, church groups, just, it's really a broad, it can be a retired teachers group, it could be all kinds of different organizations that want to have a speaker come in and talk about early Omaha history or specific topics. So we, about 20 different topics that we have speakers that are...
And it doesn't have to be a large organization, does it?
Oh, not at all, no.
That's what I was thinking. And you're always looking for volunteers, both for the groundskeeping and the garden and for tours and other purposes?
Absolutely, and I think one of the things that we try to do is really match people's interests into what, we have such a variety of things that people can help with. We want them to do something that they really enjoy and kind of, there's a lot of different places to volunteer all over town, so we want to make sure it's a good fit.
Thank you. I knew all that. I just wanted to get it out to the public.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Kathy, I'd like to publicly thank you for the tour that you gave me of the beautiful garden that's one of the more recent additions to the Crook House, and to also publicly reiterate our support for maintaining the facility itself. I think you and I discussed possible improvement project relative to the storm windows...
Yes.
...that we'd be interested in the next budget cycle, maybe talking to you about helping out with. You, I think, gathered that you have a particularly engaged county board who support your efforts, and we've done some good work here in commemorating certain milestones. As you saw today, serendipitously, you're here for the commemoration of the 100th anniversary of the Douglas County Public Defender's Office, but I worked in conjunction with the Historical Society on the 2004 commemoration of the 150th anniversary of the founding of Omaha and Douglas County, which was held in this very space. And going forward, we're going to be sensitive to those types of things, so we'll be calling on your archival expertise because now that we know that we, we have a good working relationship with you as the archivist and with the clerk as a record keeper, going forward, we'll be relying on you more and more, I think, to actively commemorate the milestones of Douglas County. And I noticed coming in that one of them coming up is the commemoration of the 150th anniversary of the founding of the Omaha Police Department. And so those types of things are important to us to keep in mind, and we look forward to continued excellent service that you provide to us and the citizens of Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, please know that we don't take that support lightly. We appreciate it, and please do call on us because that is truly why we're there, and that's the work that we do. Thank you.
I think for many of us, it's a labor of love. I know that Commissioner Duda's mother historically has been very involved in the establishment of the speakers bureau for the Historical Society, and I know that Commissioner Kraft and Commissioner Boyle have been actively involved in projects that the Historical Society has, and it's our pleasure to help out, and I think this is a good, healthy partnership going forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, and one last thing. The current exhibit is Bootleggers and Speakeasies.
It's Gangsters and Tunnels: Prohibition in Douglas County.
Okay, that's right. Because I recall seeing one of Mike Boyle's photographs. The other thing, what is the next event?
The next one, the next event?
Are they next? You know, tell us...
Well, the next exhibit that will be in that space were Gangsters and Tunnels. The Gangsters and Tunnels will be up until next spring, and then following that, we're doing one on radio and television in Omaha, which should be really interesting. Right now, we're working, the exhibit that we're working on is on Omaha, You Ought to Be in Pictures, and it's about the film industry and its effect in Omaha, on Omaha, and that will be an outdoor exhibit that's Heartland of America Park, which is a 60-foot outdoor exhibit, and that will be up for two years. So we're working on getting that up later this summer. In terms of events, we always have the second Sunday talk. The July talk will be on the 12th, and it will be on immigration and its effect on the development of Omaha, and that's kind of setting up our fall conference that will be called E Pluribus Omaha, and it will talk, I mentioned earlier about the 20 different ethnic groups that we're dealing with, so that conference will be held in September. So those are a few things we have coming.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda.
E Pluribus Omaha, was that the name of Harry Otis's book?
It is. E Pluribus Omaha: Immigrants All. And we're basically using that as kind of our basis for the conference, and Harry's book started with Native Americans, and then as chronologically, as different groups came into Omaha, it referred to each of those groups. And we're doing kind of the same thing, and we'll have speakers. That's why we're working with so many groups, so that they can help us get historians from each of their groups to be able to speak and set it up kind of as a conference style so people can choose which sessions they want to go to and learn about it.
Thank you. I wanted to add one more thing to, Commissioner Kavanaugh was talking about where we, where you have helped us, and one that, more that I would, I want to make sure is included in there, when the courthouse enjoyed its centennial celebration here recently. The Historical Society was a huge help in putting the pieces together for that, so they are quite an asset.
It was a fun project, yes. Thank you.
Can I, can I, you know, and I'm not, I'm gonna just throw this out here for a project because that was interesting. Knowing the 150-year celebration of the courthouse, you know, for a minute of time, we had a lot of the information from Commissioners' past, this courthouse information, and there's a lot of stories running around here, and I do think there is a book somewhere in that. I don't know who writes it, and I just bring that up because you actually got, you know, living, living history up here with some of the stories here, and I just think it would be good to capture some of that from a County Board's perspective, you know, I think it's a good book there somewhere. If somebody ever wanted to write it before, you know, people's memories fade or other things of that sort, I just want to throw that out there as a suggestion.
Well, at a minimum, we need to do Record Oral Histories.
Yeah.
And so that we'd have them for a book whenever that gets put together. Great idea.
All righty.
I'll be calling on you next year.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I think there's a motion to second on the floor. Will everyone please vote? Thank you all. Item C, Child and Youth Services. I'd like to take these together. Item one is approval of the amendment to an agreement with the Child Savers Institute for Shelter Service, and item two is an approval of amendment agreement with Father Fanick and Boy's Home for Shelter Services. And to explain to the Board, these are extensions of current contracts we already have. The issue that's, that we're having is the shelter services are, there's not room to refer to shelters, so without room being referred there, the money hasn't been able to get used, and we need to keep them as alternatives to refer kids to, so we're just extending it out a little more time. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. There's motion to second. Please vote. Item G, Human Resources. Item one is weekly personnel report from civil service. Any questions on that from the Board? Seeing none. Item two, weekly CO reports on sexual assaults. Patrick.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Item three, Legislative Issues. There are none, luckily. And item A, Other Legislative Issues, I know of none. Before we officially go into executive session, I want to turn it over to Commissioner Kraft to make a recognition.
Oh, we also have Child and Youth Services. You just did the Administrative Services.
We did Child and Youth Services.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you are.
Okay, somehow I got, I know why. It was Mike was sitting there. I'd like to acknowledge we have two Boy Scouts here. Could you come to the front? And if either of you want a selfie, Commissioner Boyle would take your picture for you. But do you have any questions for us?
Come to the microphone.
Yeah, come to, identify yourself and your troop, and tell us why you're here.
Well, I'm Sullivan Stavnik. I'm from Troop 42 as well as...
I'm Marshall Dawkins, and we're both from the same troop.
We are here because we are going to finish one of the requirements for an equal requirement merit badge and citizenship in the community, where we are going to listen to a city council meeting.
And Troop 42 is the one that's in Dundee Presbyterian Church?
Yes.
Okay, yes. My son is a member of that. And I didn't realize, Alex Kraft.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I know.
Okay. I didn't realize you were Troop 42, and that's not why. Have you ever been to the historical, the Fort Crook House?
I don't believe I have.
Well, I'd like you to talk to Kathy and Cindy, and I forgot the other gentleman. Peter. And I think it'd be a great troop outing. Okay? So before you leave, if you would please talk to them.
Mr. Kraft will drive.
And do you have any questions for us?
No.
You notice there's a little bit of levity, there's interest. You had a good meeting because it wasn't anything that was long and boring, like some, like most of them.
Levity.
Levity, yes.
Levity.
Levity, yes. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Congratulations to you.
Thank you all. There is need for an executive session. With that, I like...
Mr. Chair, as long as, there's one personal comment I'd like to add, personal privilege. I was going to say and decided not to when they were talking about various things with the Historical Society, but Commissioner Kraft said I expected a retort when he made that comment, but, and there is a retort. What it is, is that Ann and I and our children were in Cripple Creek, Colorado, a long time ago, several years ago, kids were little, and we're driving through Cripple Creek, and we stopped at some shop on the street, and it had a history of the labor riots over the mines in Colorado, in Cripple Creek. And... And they had photographs of the criminals who instigated the riots. And among them were, one was a great uncle, Nick Boyle. And another was his uncle, Patrick Carey, C-A-R-E-Y, and a host of these relatives of mine, Carahers, all these Irish, because of Irish settlement, the Sisters of Mercy were out there. It was just a riot. And so, anyway, I saw these, I was quite stunned. So, I quickly, I was able to buy them and get them out of public view. So, I should have passed them on to the Historical Society, but, you know, I just didn't really feel comfortable taking the picture saying Boyle in front of the thing, you know, but anyway. So, there is that motive, and I'm interested in, there's all those things that happen all across the country, you know? So, there is a retort to your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Do I need officially read it? Well, for litigation and negotiations?
Litigation and labor negotiations.
Okay. So said. Is there a motion second?
There was a second.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion to whatever, or second, whatever.
PJ, are you going with the day?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Mike, are you going?
You all right?
No.
What's going on?
See you later, Ellen.
Call 911.
Are you okay?
No, he's having a diabetic.
Medic, we sent a medic unit to the 1819 part of City Hall.
Our AED, don't we have one there?
What is that? Oh, it's...I think it's outside there.
And now I go with brother from sea to shining sea.